Hey, good morning. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Atchison County Commission meeting for Monday, November thirteenth. Like to call the meeting to order and welcome Mr. Cormod for the invocation.
During those past weekends, several different organizations have paused to give thanks to and for veterans. The Pledge of Allegiance that will be recited in a few moments underscores our binding connection to the work and service of our veterans. Since today is the first meeting of the Commissioners in November, I think it's appropriate to reflect on the service of our veterans means to us. As we rightly thank veterans, both living and not, for their service, let us protect what they purchased. Their service made it possible to know life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. They purchased for us the rights we so cherish, the right to speak, the right to bear arms, the right to assemble, the right to worship. When someone says that we must stop disagreeing and all think the same way, then the work of a veteran is being canceled. When someone says all guns must be banned, the work of a veteran is being canceled. When someone says we can't meet together, the work of a veteran is being canceled. When someone demands that we all believe the same way, whether from a science classroom or from a political rally or from a pulpit, then the work of a veteran is being canceled. I do wish that everyone thought as I think and walked as I walked and believed as I believe. The hidden conflicts buried in our cherished rights can lead us to a stronger community. The Apostle Paul wrote that there must be some conflict among us so we can figure out who is right. That's in First Corinthians eleven. Dr. Scott Cormode, who teaches at Fuller Theological Seminary in California reportedly said recently that conflict opens the path to honesty. Honesty leads to intimacy and intimacy builds community. If I were to force, compel, or coerce you to think, walk, and believe as I do, then I would destroy the community veterans purchased. I would then forget why poppies blew at Flanders Field. As we recall days of turmoil in the past and cope with our present times, let us keep in mind certain words from King David of old. "They should be a goal ever before us. Behold how good and pleasant it is when brothers dwell in unity." It is like the precious oil on the head running down on the beard, on the beard of Aaron, running down on the collar of his robe. It is like the dew of Perman which falls on the mountain of Zion. For there the Lord has commanded the blessing life and reward. Let us pray. Father, thank you for calling these Commissioners to regulate the affairs of our county. Please give them wisdom and diligence as they certify the results of last week's election. May they also wisely administer the certain programs and infrastructure matters up for consideration today. I pray that their leadership will bond our county together as a strong and resilient community, offering both a pleasant location to live and a thriving environment to do business. Bless their minds and hearts with the presence of your Spirit. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to repaying for which hands. One nation under God, indivisible, infinite. Thank you, Mr. Porter.
Michelle, can you turn that down? I can't hear it. Thank you.
Perfect, a public comment.
Good. Thank you for taking note of what I said about the sign and the name of the highway. And a sign has been put up on top of the stop sign at the intersection north of my house.
Yes, sir.
It only underscores how complex and confused our GIS system is because they put up the wrong name for the highway. They put up the name that says K-9 Highway. In Lancaster, it's called State Highway Nine. We don't mention Kansas and Lancaster. In Effingham, it's K-9 Highway, the same road. And so you go a mile south of my place, turn the road, the corner, and it becomes K-9 Highway over to Chris Kaplinger's. But at my place, it's not K-9 Highway. It's State Highway Nine. And so they put the wrong name up on the sign. But one comment that I have, since the election is done, I would encourage you to be in contact with whoever at the state needs to be in contact with about the non-city Huron Precinct in Lancaster Township. It's anecronistic. There's never a ballot that's different. I've been the presiding judge several times at Lancaster. I wasn't this time because my name's on the ballot. But the non-city Huron Precinct and the non-city Lancaster precinct always have the same ballots. And it just creates extra, an extra work for both the printer to produce separate ballots and for the clerks to count extra ballots. You know, we could end up at Lancaster at the polling place at the end of the day with a municipal election with eight different ballots to sort and count. By the time you have the printed ballots and the soft touch created ballots, and you got four different precincts. We actually have people in Lancaster Township who live in the Huron Precinct and they're registered to vote in the Lancaster precinct because of an error in their registration. And so every time they vote, it's technically voter fraud. We just need to get rid of that precinct up there. And it probably involves the Secretary of State, Michelle says she's not sure. But if you can do anything about that, that'd be great to get that fixed up. Thank you, thank you for your time.
Okay, approval of the minutes from October thirty-first. Eric, did you have a chance to read the minutes?
Yes, I'll make a motion to approve as written.
Okay, and I will second. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes to the zero. Commissioner comments? Commissioner Noel?
I don't have any, Mr. Noel.
Okay. Last week I had a senior village advisory board meeting and then I attended Bray Lad's retirement celebration on Friday in Effingham. And just what a wonderful, what a wonderful gathering. Forty-five years is amazing to dedicate to extension. And the community's turnout really showed the impact he had on so many people in our county. So thanks to Ray and congratulations on your retirement. New business, Michelle Phillips, County Clerk, twenty twenty-three General City School Election Canvas.
For starters, we need to find a canvas board. Um, I, with Commissioner Ray this being gone, we're gonna have to fill the vacancy on the County Board of Canvassers. So in that event, but the member of the County Board of Canvassers shall be absent or be prevented from serving on such board, the remaining members of the County Board of Canvassers shall select an elector to serve on the Board of County Canvassers in such members' place. So we'll need an elected official. So do you guys have any preferences to who?
We need an elected official. So the sheriff's the only one right now on the meeting. Sheriff Lori, are you listening?
Kind of sorry, I didn't, I didn't hear what you're talking about, though.
Can you come join us to canvas for Michelle this morning in Alan's absence?
Oh, sure.
Okay, is that okay?
That's fine. It's the only person.
Yeah.
Neither right now.
Yes, please.
All right, thank you.
All right.
So I have copies of the unofficial results. And there's a couple races that I'm trying to pay close attention to. Haley and Mr. Henderson have worked on provisionals. We have twenty of them.
If someone doesn't, they'll have a scan spell it, like you know what you're going for, but it has to be spelled correctly. It's voter intent.
Got it.
Is, that's, and Michelle can explain that a little bit more, but voter intent.
Nice. I was just curious because you, yeah, you can tell.
We did do a post-election audit last Thursday, had to turn those results in. We audited two races. I'm trying to remember, City of Effingham and USD three seventy-seven in Effingham. And we did that with Benton Township, Benton Precinct. So we did get approval from the Secretary of State on our audit, so we are cleared to canvass. Well, we had one thousand, I guess I could wait till Jack gets down here.
I forget, you have the school districts look like now.
We actually had voters this year. It was kind of nice. In the past, I don't know that we've had any. It turned out, so. About a dozen voters overall from.
City of Atchison, three positions open.
Correct.
City of Effingham.
One mayor and five.
Five positions.
So the top five of those. City of Effingham Mayor is the one position that I'm trying to pay attention to.
Oh, wow.
Yes. So. Here in City Council had nobody on the ballot, so all of those five positions will win by default with write-ins.
And when filed to run, they just do write-ins? Um, what is, was it this election that's a Mickey Mouse stipulation, all that could be? So can you explain that? Cause I can better understand that.
It was something new through the Secretary of State. Anybody who runs for a first-class city, county, national, or state level, if they are not on the ballot but are wanting to do write-in or collect write-in ballot votes, they have to have an affidavit of write-in candidacy on file with either the Secretary of State, depending upon the national and state levels. And then county and first-class cities have to have that affidavit on file with myself thirty days prior to the election.
Okay, so that's only first class within that.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. Did not affect cities of the second or third class, township, school boards, precinct committee people. Next year will have that, so it didn't affect any of those.
I couldn't remember if it was next year. It took effect in this, this time, but then when I didn't see it. I was like, that probably makes it a lot nicer for you guys than.
July first.
Oh, yeah.
That just came along here.
Oh, yeah. Just letting you know that my school board.
Thank you.
Thank you. We had to have a, an elector fill the vacancy. So since you were on the meeting, you kind of got volunteered.
That's right.
So I've given everybody the unofficial results of everything. City Commission, there are three positions. The top two vote-getters will have four-year terms. The lowest vote-getter will have a two-year term. We did have some out-of-school district, district. Out-of-area school districts. And everybody, all the write-ins that are needing to be written in have been written in the abstract. We do have, we have one thousand three hundred and seventy voters. Very low turnout, but some of the precincts apparently both decided not to vote. They didn't have a full lot on their ballot. We had twenty, twenty of those were provisional ballots. And I gave you guys all the campus summary.
I have a question.
Yes.
Was one polling place, did they run out of ballots? I heard rumor was that one polling place ran out of ballots.
There should have been. No, I've never heard that. I've not heard that from anybody.
I couldn't believe it with a low turnout that that would have happened.
No.
In that, if that ever happened, how would they just do touch, the touchscreen?
Now, there were some, because we have to buy our ballots in batches of twenty-five. And we have some of our outlying school districts that we have maybe two to three voters. And I don't think it's feasible to purchase a batch of twenty-five just for those few voters. So we do require that they do touchscreen, but it's a valid ballot.
Sure.
We do have Walnut Enclave, which is also, I think we have five voters, maybe six now. And Walnut Enclave, which is county surrounded by city, but it is Walnut Township. So they, they vote. And I've actually spoken to one of the voters and he's like, I have no problem with that. No problem at all. So as long as it counts, which it does. So.
Okay.
But yeah, we don't, we don't get paper ballots for all of the outlying school districts, nor do we get it from Walnut Enclave. But we, we had thirty-five percent, I think, ballots that we ordered. And we had less than ten percent.
Sure. I couldn't imagine that happening. So I haven't heard about it since I was here Tuesday night. Great help with ballots. But I just want to, it was, it was an interesting question. If they, if you ever did run out of ballots, you know, how would you finish that out?
Right. And it depend upon, it would depend upon realistically how low we were to get and what election it was. If it was a general election, we would typically order, you know, seventy-five or a hundred percent of our ballots. So realistically, I don't think we would ever run out of ballots. No, we always, we always shoot for the high side. No, but we still try to save money, so we don't ever order a hundred percent. So. But out of the twenty provisionals, I have, I have four different. Four different. We went through them, Mr. Henderson and Haley went through them and we've subdivided them to four different divisions. So I have one batch that is a change of address. They moved within the county and they voted the correct ballot. And we have KSA twenty-five dash twenty-three fifty-three and KSA twenty-five dash two thirty-one six C subsection B. Basically, when the move of registrant, update the registration, which we would have done on the provisional, we would have updated the registration record and we've done the provisional. Recommendation is to count these ballots. We have ten ballots.
I would look for a motion, please, for a county press recommendation to count the ballots for voters moved within county. Ten ballots. Case moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero.
I have three ballots here where the voter, registered voter requested an advance ballot. They did not receive their advance ballot by the mail and they voted at the polls. We, within the last couple of years, they've changed that. They've made it to where you used to be able to request ballots up until Friday before the election. They've changed that. They backed it up. So you have to have your request in by the Tuesday before the election. So it's one week. So all of our last-minute Tuesday requests were mailed out on Wednesday morning, which should have been plenty of time to get there by mail, but they did not. So these people actually voted at the polls. We have verified that they did not turn in their original mail ballot that was sent out. So per KSA twenty-five dash twenty-nine oh eight F, the recommendation is to count these three ballots.
Okay, I'd look for a motion to count the ballot, the three ballots registered voter requested advance ballot, didn't receive ballot by mail, voted at polls as presented by the county clerk.
Second.
Case been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero.
On this next move, this is five.
There, and I've got two more here. These two were, what's the word I want to say? These two basically requested an advance ballot. They did not receive their ballot. So they were registered voters. They did not receive it because they had moved to a different location. But I'm not sure if it was a permanent location or a temporary location, but they.
Permanent? Permanent, permanent, probably?
Okay.
Oh, we're with that.
These are, these are two that we, we go to our nursing homes now. Haley takes the touchscreen up to our nursing homes and we had found that we had some residents at a nursing home. They did not get their ballot because it went to their, their house. So we did provisional on these two. So these as well, we, they requested the advance. They had the advance, I think, permanent advance. And they did not get their ballots, of course, because males, election mail is not to be, not to be forwarded. So we got them back. They did not vote their original one. This is the second one. So this is basically the same case. These were just, so KSA twenty-five dash twenty-nine oh eight F. And then there's a couple other ones, statutes that also apply to this. Recommendation would be to count these as well.
Look for a motion to approve the recommendation from the county clerk to accept the two ballots.
So move.
The move is seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero.
And then one of the provisions to vote in a, an election in Atchison County is to be a registered voter. We have five that we have not found to be registered in the state of Kansas, let alone Atchison County. So KSA twenty-five dash twenty-three oh two and KSA twenty-five dash twenty-three eleven both refer to the duties of qualified voters to register. And we have five that have not done that. So the recommendation would be not to count these five.
Look for a motion to take the recommendation from the county clerk not to count the five ballots of non-registered voters.
Second.
The move is seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero.
So I will take these. I will run them through the machine upstairs, count any write-ins that we need and bring you up an official campus or abstract.
So much.
How long would one take?
I'm gonna say twenty minutes, potentially, depending upon write-ins.
Timeframes.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the list, Justin Frazier requesting a resolution of support.
Good morning. So I am working with two different projects to make an application to the Kansas Housing Resource Corporation for an allocation of what are called Kansas Housing Investor Tax Credits. This was created about two years ago. They've done a couple of rounds of, it's a competitive process, very competitive. They have about, oh, thirteen to fifteen million dollars a year that they spread their number one priorities to spread that around the entire state. So there's towns as small as Montezoo. There's some very small, very, you know, towns of a couple hundred people that have successfully applied for these funds. And then there's projects in Derby and, you know, places just out that are effectively part of the Wichita Metro but are in adjacent counties. El Dorado, you know, there's even places, I think Bonner Springs even, because they're technically not part of the unified government, has gotten an allocation. So it runs the full, the full gamut here. So I think a lot, I spent a lot of time, as you guys know, trying to figure out how to get outside resources into, into Atchison. This program is sort of partnered with the Moderate Income Housing Program for the state. Atchison in its entire history, I mean, that Atchison County has only ever received one award and that was for the old YMCA project that you all sponsored at the county commission level. That was, that was awarded in twenty eighteen. That moderate income program has been around for fifteen years now. So this is effectively the second application to this package of programs from KHRC. So I'm trying to, to pitch them on the argument that, you know, Atchison has been underrepresented historically in this regard. So I'll spend a couple of minutes talking about the two projects. So it was maybe the summer of last year when KHRC announced they were going to have some of the state's ARPA funds pumped into their MIH programs. At the same time, they created this housing investor tax credit program. KHRC historically in this program has had like two million dollars a year for the entire state. Very competitive. Well, now they've done a really good job of promoting these programs. They got more resources with all the COVID funding, this tax credit. And so now there's a lot more interest in it and it's still insanely competitive, even though they have a lot more resources. This is the last cycle of this funding that I would say has sort of pumped up a level of resources. So it's a good time to be applying. It's also gotten more difficult with construction prices and interest rates to make a project work. So we're hopeful that, that we have a competitive application. But last summer, when all of those new resources came out, in my role of working economic development with the City of Atchison, we published a sort of call for project partners to see what ideas were out there, who, did the Cottle family want to use this opportunity to help build out our Berlin? Did somebody have an idea to build? There's some divisions that have been built, places that haven't been fully, you know, what, what's out there? And while initially we had a lot of interest, there's a lot of bureaucratic, sort of banging your head against the wall, which I have a high tolerance for. Other people don't have that same high tolerance. And so there's a lot of submittals and documentation and requirements and letters of support and resumes. And a lot of people see that kind of stuff and they just go, so somebody else can worry about it. Well, I don't have any problem doing that stuff. But when I have, so there's two projects that sort of filtered through all of that and kind of stuck with it and have the resources and the project readiness and the, the application to, they have the wherewithal to put together a really strong, strong effort to, to, to win. The first is JMJ Properties, which you probably recognize as the Vateroff's Real Estate Holding Company. They are working on building a new cul-de-sac in Effingham. Lived at the corner of Ninth and George. They've got that property under contract. The full plan there is five single-family houses and five duplexes. This application would be for the five single-family homes that would be for sale. If we are successful, that project would receive thirty-two thousand dollars of tax credit, state tax credit per home. So thirty-two times five, that's that portion of this application package. Initially, we were looking at a couple of other things in other places, but you know, timelines, deadlines. At some, at some point, you gotta be done with putting things together and planning. So that's, that's the, the plan for that is, Justin Vateroff has been out there to, to Effingham and they've kind of got an agreement on if he builds the road, they'll, they'll run the utilities. And he's an accomplished builder and they've, they've got the resources to be able to do that. So it's a, a pretty strong application. I think the, the, the other side of the application, I'll explain why we wanted to present them in a unified front as opposed to separately in a minute. But the other one is the, the, it's called Vision for First and it's the, the developers that are trying to build out the long vacant territory between Benedictine College and the riverfront. You've got a series of different properties there under contract. And they're currently going through the zoning process, which is sort of a separate consideration. Obviously, in the city, you have to have the, the right zoning to be able to build what you want to do. It's a series of single-family houses. It's a series of single-family houses, uh. Five or six duplexes, uh, and then some what are called accessory dwelling units, uh, if, if the. Yeah, if the person buying a building actually wants to do it, but it's like a, a granny flat above a garage in the back. Uh, that kind of thing, mother-in-law suite, whatever you want to, whatever you want to call it. So that neighborhood has the capacity to eventually be. Fifty, sixty units of housing, which is a, a really big deal. Um, the one in Effingham has the capacity to be. Fifteen, uh, which percentage-wise also a really big deal. The, the Vision for First Project, which is here in, in Atchison, obviously, the application for that is for nine units. They have a full sort of neighborhood plan that they're trying to build out. So the application does not specify exactly which properties. Uh, or it's, it's, the intent for them is to get a jump on the different housing types that they're proposing to build. So to build a couple of four-bedroom houses, a couple of three-bedroom houses, a couple of two-bedroom houses. One of their duplexes, one of the accessory dwelling units to kind of get. The concept out there. They couldn't point to a map right now and say, this goes here, this goes here, this goes here. They're still going through the, there's a lot of civil engineering challenges with the topography of that land. So they have a lot of work ahead of them in the design front. Uh, they're probably initially going to try to limit the infrastructure expense to build those initial houses, but their application, uh, is intended to be nine units. So what we have is five in Effingham, nine in Atchison, that's a total package of fourteen, fourteen times thirty-two is four hundred and forty-eight thousand. Uh, of state. Housing Investor Tax Credits. Those get sold or they can be self-utilized and then that essentially creates, uh. You know, monetary value for the project to try and fill in the gap. Um, that's the theory behind it anyway, so. Uh, the application, uh, requires the sponsoring. It's not the same as the moderate income that we did before where, where I have to come back with a bunch of agreements and, uh. The Housing Investor Credit Program wants to demonstrate that the local government is supportive, but you don't have any administrative requirements. You won't ask me. To sign a grant agreement. Uh, the agreements on the Housing Investor Program are entirely between the developers. And the Kansas Housing Resource Corporation. So there's no ongoing, uh, administrative or. Management or compliance requirements, uh, with any, with any local government sponsor. Yeah, sure.
Uh, on the second development, is that all within the city limits, Atchison?
Yes.
Okay, I didn't know where exactly that boundary is because.
Yeah.
That would be things that bleed over to the county if it was roads, et cetera.
Sure. Nope, it's, uh, the second one, the Vision for First, uh, project isn't entirely within, uh, the city limits. So yeah, that's, that's what I'm asking for is the, the, uh, resolution of support. It dumps into our application, which is, you know, hundreds of pages long. Um, oh, I, I will explain real, real quickly why, why may, why we are choosing to do this in tandem as opposed to apart, um. I feel like they sort of augment each other well and I can write a better narrative. As to, uh, as to why this, I can write a, a stronger narrative looking at this regionally instead of just. Yeah, here's the Effingham project, here's the Atchison project. Regionally, there's a. Uh, so K H R C likes awarding projects to smaller places, especially smaller places that have never had any help from them before. Uh, and so obviously Effingham's really attractive in that regard, but if I was trying to lean entirely on like the. Planning documents and, uh, some of those things that the traditionally it's bigger cities that have. So the city of Atchison has a, a strategic plan, a comprehensive plan and. You know, a- all that, you know, stuff that, you know. Uh, is bureaucratically valuable, um. And whether it's, you know, in practice, when you're writing grants and stuff, that, that stuff matters, uh, especially in a highly competitive environment. So to be able to. Uh, have those two strengths lean on each other, uh, and lean heavily on the growth trajectory of Benedictine and Amberwell. Uh, is, is a really strong, um, uh, application, I think. So. That's why we're doing it that way. We'll, we'll see in January if it's successful, but that's, uh, yeah, that's what we're trying to, trying to accomplish.
Do you have a template?
Yeah. And Pat, maybe you can answer the difference of, of resolution of support versus letter of support? Um, I mean.
Just more formal, highest action.
Okay.
I have not seen.
Yeah. You get the chance to read this?
That's more important, Pat. What was the original, I mean, when they started this K H I T C program, I mean, how did that originate?
Uh, so a couple of years ago, there was a, just a ton of conversation in Topeka about. Rural Kansas really struggling to see housing development. And I, I, I'll use this as an example. So since two thousand, and I, I don't have countywide data, but in the city of Atchison, since two thousand and ten, there's been two hundred and ten. Single-family houses demolished, some for fire, some for condition, and there's been something like seventy-five houses, um, built. So there's that structural deficit and that, that's not unique to, to Atchison. It plays out across rural Kansas. Numbers might be a little different, but so I think there was, uh, in the, the moderate income housing program, um, that K H R C has had for. It was Brownback era, uh, uh, that, that created that program. So it's been a number of years ago. Uh, there's been some really good success stories from that, but they only had two million a year for the whole state. A couple of years ago was when the state, uh, you know, started to see the surpluses, revenue surpluses, which is always when new programs get created and. Wh- whether or not, uh, I wasn't down there advocating for the creation of it, but if they're gonna create it, I'd like to see it benefit. Our local community, but I, I, I just think they. Yeah, it's a new development now is highly concentrated in the, what I say is the top ten percent of zip codes. So if you're not in. Johnson County or Cedric County. Like it's pretty, it made, well, parts of Salina see some new subdivisions, Lawrence, Manhattan, but if you did the math on it, it's pretty limited, uh. And we just don't build as much, we don't, especially since the Great Recession, like it just hasn't recovered, even in Atchison, uh. In the early two thousands, they're building twenty houses a year and for the last fifteen years, it's been like five or six on average. So. Things just never picked up after that. So I think it's just trying to address that and. The, I will, I will say too, two years ago, the state completed their first one, first statewide housing market assessment in. I think they said something like twenty or thirty years. And what they heard in rural places was that specifically, like, that. Even if you can, you, you get somebody, uh, say a, a new, uh, school superintendent or a new nurse practitioner or something to get them to move to Humboldt. And they get there, and it's like, hey, here's your housing option. This house is, you know, have three houses on the market. And condition-wise, they're just not to the standard. So they, they were seeing a lot of employers. Tell them, uh, this is an enormous problem. We can't hire people. We get them to say, yeah, okay, I'm interested as a. Career trajectory, and then they come and they, they go look at housing and they say, I can't do it. So that, I think that's probably the biggest reason.
Okay, I was just kind of curious how it originated.
Yep.
And this is the last round, you said?
The last round this year, uh, the, the good news going, so. A year and a half ago, K H R C got like s- sixty million dollars worth of, so the last three or four cycles of this. From in terms of moderate income housing and K H I T C have been drastically elevated levels of funding. Next year, uh, unless there's new funding, the M I H program goes back to two million a year for the end, like. So that, that money's pretty well, the, the jump of money is gone. Uh, K H I T C has an indefinite authorization in it for like. I can't remember if it's thirteen or fifteen million, but that it's, uh, it's thirty-two thousand per unit. And that's written into the law. So as inflation occurs over time, that will have a diminishing impact, um. Which is fine, but, uh, so next year, instead of. Like over the last year, I bet they, they handed out thirty, thirty-five, forty million dollars worth of support to housing projects like this. Next year it'll be. Fifteen total. So this project, um, if we're not successful this time, I do expect. To come back with a similar. Version the next time around, uh, cause the, the, I don't, it won't proceed, uh, without it. It's just n- not enough. There, um, to make it work, but, uh. Next time it might look a little bit different. If there's enough resource left next year that we can continue to apply and see this and. Um, K H R C is good about giving me feedback. So if they see some sort of a weakness in this application. In fact, the, I, I, I submit way too many of these other places. I'm in working in Great Bend and Hutchinson and Hayes and. Victoria and all, all, all kinds of places, um. A lot of times it takes a second or a third bite at the apple with an application to actually get the funding. So. I won't even be discouraged if we don't win. You just have to kind of retool and present it again and. You, they, they, it's only about twenty-five percent of applications that have been getting funded, even with the elevated funding levels. It's, so it's super, super competitive.
I have a question, um, if I'm calling for a motion to allow myself to sign, it, it, does my vote count? Sure. Okay, I was just making sure, cause usually I don't vote for myself to sign things that, you know, it's those two. So with Alan gone.
Have to.
Yeah, I know. I was just making sure it'd be fine. So.
If you have any reservations about the.
And can I have that copy? I think we need two copies, sign. Okay, so I would look for a motion to allow the chair to sign resolution number twenty, twenty-three. Dash fifteen thirty, a resolution of support for the application of the Atchison County Housing Project. For the Kansas Housing Investor Tax Credit Program to the Kansas Housing Resource Corporation for the development of certain housing within Atchison County, Kansas.
Awesome.
Okay, and I will second. So it's been moved to second and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Slimings.
Resolution number fifteen thirty.
Fifteen thirty.
Okay. Thank you very much for the support. I'll let you know where we land.
Thank you. We have about twenty minutes. What, what's up? Oh, okay. Well, I was just looking to see where she, was she here? Okay. I, well, I was just gonna ask Mark or we did approve. No, yeah, if I, do you want to do your ARPA consulting?
Sure. I know what it is.
Okay.
Um, so part of our ARPA agreement with, uh, outside firm that we have, the Boyd Group LLC. Um, we have ARPA consulting services and we have an invoice for you to, to pay for those. September, um, ARPA services, um, out of the ARPA fund.
Okay, uh, look for a motion to approve, uh, purchase order in the amount of seventeen thousand nine hundred and seventy-three dollars to Boyd Group LLC. Um, out of ARPA Fund one forty-three for the September twenty twenty-three progress bill.
So move.
Okay, I'll second. It's been noted and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you, it's Mike. So does that end the?
No, um, there's, that was allocated, I think, um. Through the life of our ARPA funding. So depending on, um, how much more they have to. There, there could be more. Which there will be more until we spend it all.
Yeah.
Okay, I also have a purchase order, um, that Kim Pruitt, Joint Communications Director, sent us for Interpool license. Um, this purchase order is to Huber and Associates in the amount of five thousand seven fifty-one fifty. For Interpool license and O S maintenance from January first of twenty-four to March twenty-first of twenty-four. Well, it's a quarterly maintenance until the switch to sw- Central Square. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Okay, I will second. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Passes two to zero. Part of the letter for our public meeting was waiting for this.
It's just for information.
Okay, we'll just keep it moving. Perfect, thank you.
I may come in handy when you get to the hearing.
Got it. We have two weeks this week. If you want to look at one, then I'll look at one and then we can swap. We have two weeks this week. If you wanna look at one, then I'll look at one and then we can swap. Ready for you if you're ready. Corey Scott, Emergency Medical Services Director, purchase order approved.
Amendment to that um. I don't need purchase approval now.
Okay.
Uh I traded some surplus equipment to get that purchase order lowered. So we're gonna be back in the uh. Four thousand dollar range, which was originally anticipated and back within my budget authority. So. But I thought since I had your time, might give you an update on the ambulances. It is on time. It is scheduled to be done December eighteenth. And we should be able to pick it up the week after that or have it delivered, whichever ends up working better. So.
Awesome.
On pace for that and. Also along the same lines. Uh the part that I originally needed approval for purchase and now don't. Uh is for our specific power cots. It's the amount for the floor. Going into the future, we will now be completely transitioned to the new power cot system on all the frontline ambulances. So one of the purchases I had hoped for going into twenty twenty-four was to purchase a spare cot. That way, if one of the cots failed, we wouldn't have an ambulance completely out of service. So. I have started the process of looking for used refurbished or demo cot. Hoping to be in the twenty thousand dollar range. I don't know if that's gonna be possible. New ones are in the forty-seven thousand dollar range. So. Just didn't wanna completely waste your time on having to change my PO needs. So I thought I'd give you something to. To update you on what's going on at EMS right now. So.
Thank you.
New cup would be about like a car.
Yeah, a nice car. Yeah, I think the last ones we purchased were forty-two thousand, so. Yep, but hopefully I'll have something found. I think there should be enough money in the uh equipment fund to do that going forward. But they have something in front of you in the next month or two for that. That's all I needed.
Thanks, you too. And we have about. Twenty minutes. I don't know if you wanna do a little bit of your updates interview or how you're feeling about. Everything but exactly.
Good morning. I have a uh. Or Schwab Eaton on the uh grid inspections on the less than twenties. For fourteen thousand two hundred and forty-two dollars. When we can proceed with getting those inspected this. Within the year, hopefully.
All right. Look for a motion to approve a purchase order as presented from the Road and Bridge Superintendent to Schwab Eaton in the amount of fourteen thousand two hundred and forty-two dollars. For structures less than. Twenty-foot inspections. Okay, I will second. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
All right.
Aye. Passes two to zero.
We have another purchase order to Midwest Services out of Shuler, Nebraska. For bridge planks. In the amount of sixteen thousand three hundred and fifty dollars and seventy-two cents.
Look for a motion to approve purchase orders presented from the Road and Bridge Superintendent. And Midwest Services in the amount of sixteen thousand three hundred and fifty dollars and seventy-two cents. One mile a second. You're moving in second is all those in favor say aye.
Bridge twenty-nine point eight dash two point five. Uh we are currently working on it today. And we'll work on it tomorrow and hopefully have it completed. By midweek uh. There is some discussion on that, but uh. I think we need to go to executive session. We talked in the executive session earlier about getting this put on the agenda.
That will have to happen um. Later.
Yes, yes.
I got and um. Twenty-five minutes and that'll be. Road and Bridge Superintendent. And commissioners.
Yes. All right, the uh. Fisher concern. Uh just letting you know that Pat and I spoke and he's going to uh talk to Mrs. Fisher. And try to assist them. If he can in trying to obtain. A uh easement to get to their property. The other is the site to contractor. Recommendation. So site two is a failing box culvert. On Ottawa Road between two thirtieth and Phillips. Uh we set up with MHS a year ago. We picked out four sites. Uh that we were. Very concerned about. Uh this is the second site that was chosen. MHS is now owned by Benish. But Benish is uh. The same firm dealing, working with the same engineers as I had before. And in this, I have a. We had a bid. I'll just read these again. Last week. Uh Leavenworth Escavating Equipment was three hundred and eighty-seven thousand six hundred and forty-three dollars. Bettis Construction was three hundred and fifty-eight thousand nine hundred and forty-five dollars. Julius Cause Construction was two hundred and ninety-three thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. Lionel Weaver Construction was two hundred and thirty thousand ninety-five dollars. Bruce Davis Construction was one ninety-seven, six, six, seven, seventy cents. And Ebert Construction was one hundred and seventy-three thousand four hundred and ninety-one dollars and forty-one cents. I have a. A letter of recommendation from Benish. It says we have reviewed the six bids received publicly and read the county commission meeting on. October thirty-first, twenty twenty-three for the culvert replacement improvements on Ottawa Road. Ebert Construction is the lowest qualified bidder and we recommend that you award them the contract pleasing. We are finding closed the tabulations. And I also want to say that the engineering estimate on this job was one hundred and seventy-one thousand fifty-four dollars and fifty cents. So they've been very consistent. They were within two thousand of the of the uh. Little spit. So I would make a recommendation that we would. Give the award the contract to. Ebert Construction.
Okay, I would look for a motion uh to award the culvert replacement improvements to Ottawa Roads. Ebert Construction. In the amount as of one hundred and seventy-three thousand four. Four hundred and ninety-one dollars and forty-three cents. Our motion.
Somewhere.
Okay, I will second. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye, passes two to zero. And.
I just was gonna uh.
And if you need us to sign.
I will get the uh. Notice to proceed everything from. The. Engineering firm. Uh this week I. We participated at some county. In a local. Road engineer of Keith Browning of KAC, a pavement management system where we went out and. And uh. We raided all of the roads. And this will greatly help us with our uh five-year plan. Uh the plan also had. Different types of. Uh either new road construction, milling and paving. We gave ideas and suggestions on what to do on the roads after we did our assessment. So I wanted to let everybody know that. But I did that this week uh. We're working on a lot of bridges right now. Uh we're trying to get the mowing done, so which we have blowing snow, it it won't stop and drift. And uh blading the roads and trying to get some dirt patching done. The. Paintfall patching is supposed to start Thursday. And as long as the weather temperatures are where they need to be, that will continue. If it gets too cold, then they'll pick that back up in the spring. Does anybody have any? Any other questions?
Uh the only other thing I wanted to visit about was. Um our last meeting, we talked about the entrance on two sixty-second. And. Even though we had a discussion, um. My takeaway was that I had to follow up with my constituent and and basically update her after our meeting of what was decided. And I I did that. I drafted it with Pat and Joe. And. Basically drafted a response of like, there was no action or. No next steps. So then when I received the response back is like, so what does this mean? Where do I go from here? It kind of hit me because it's like. You're right, like she's asking for help and and I didn't really give direction. And and sometimes it's hard when we're there's three of us and we're having a conversation and then it's like. But the follow-up or or the decisiveness. We have a conversation, but there's no action, right afterwards? So. I just wanted to share that I responded um. Thank you for her response of like, like that aha moment of like, we need to do better of like. Coming up with something. Um and I just sent her a list of questions in my opinion that we need to answer. Someone needs to answer. Us collectively as a group or or her or or who. But I just, I feel like when our constituents are are reaching out and I mean, I know we gave the answer. Like based on the Ash toe, like here's the answer. Here's where you need to be um. But then. Since that. The discussion changed and information changed. And so. I really feel like we should take more time or dedicate maybe a workshop setting to bring the plans in to look at all of the. I mean, because I just gave her a list of questions and I can't answer any of them on my own um. Okay, because.
I guess I've got reservations about that cuz it seems like that is a um. Personal property. Plan that was developed without any. Knowledge even to the the county and we. When they come to us for specific things like the driveway entrance. We can give them an answer yes or no, but I mean, I don't think we have the. The capability or the uh expertise to be. Almost developing plans and coordination. And that's what it almost sounds like that we would be getting into.
No, I guess I just wanna understand a process, right? After listening to Justin and Frayjon.
So. Pat and I, Pat found some. Uh. Other counties and what they've done and one of them had to do with her specific situation. And maybe we need to, uh we do need to have a uh. A meeting with just us, a workshop, so we can go over some of these things and try to come up with a resolution that. You know, or the county, what fits the county, and this is what we're gonna do so that we have something to give to people. So they understand what's going on instead of us. Trying to learn and do it as we go. Uh it's just like uh. Right-of-way stuff. I I talked to Keith Browning all this week, you know, with having utilities and right-of-ways. Well, there's things that we can do that will help prepare us for these situations. When they come up. So I don't know. I would be in favor of having a workshop and try to go over some of this. And try to come up with some answers that it's like our road policy, which we've we've changed a little bit. But give us some place to start, something we can give to. To the taxpayers when they come up, when they have these questions. So we have the answer. And I would, I would be on board with that. Uh I'm getting questions all the day here here recently. On certain road standards for townships and. And making sure we have those standards someplace, you know, how to build the road. How's it supposed to be? Get it in writing and and get it done uh. And it's like like this with the entrance, you know? There's a subdivision. This is a process. This is what we have. Maybe this would be our process, but there's other counties that have them and we can look at theirs. And either model ours off of those or uh change it however we would or the commission would see fit.
And I think even just that, like we're gonna explore subdivisions for the county because it's new charter waters for us, right? But I think it's gonna continue and after listening to Justin and the housing developments and they're pushing rural housing and. You know, I know a couple other. Entities that may be doing the same thing in the county. We need to kind of. Have a process, so. We don't, I mean, because this is good. People want. Want to develop. But we need to be part of the process. And if there's no process, we need to develop it so that we can. Give the answers or work with them or. I mean, because at the end of the day. There's. There's no requirement, so they can go out and do these things. And I think. Planning on the front end is gonna make everybody's life easier of, hey, well, have you thought about this? Well, what happens if they do this and expect us to do this like? It's just a conversation of us outlining.
Well, it's just gonna take some timely meetings for us to sit down and discuss and. And you as the commission decide which way you wanna go or what should be done. Uh but it's, there's not enough time in a day on a Tuesday to do all of it. And I've got, you know, I've got other stuff that that we can talk about too. But it. It pertains to the county and how we're gonna proceed when we have this situation come up so that we're consistent with everybody. And uh. But seeming to have to make the decision right away on the. On the why.
Well, for me, I would like all of us to be at the table with the discussion rather than. One at a time. You know what I mean? Like one at a time. Like I don't, I don't, I don't.
Well, I would like to see us talk. Myself as a commission first, the commission. Well, I would like to see us talk myself as a commission first, the commission. And possibly me, if you want me involved in it before we go to that person.
No, absolutely, I just, there's, we gotta have a conversation, we gotta understand what it looks like. Cause I think it's going to keep continuing in the future, so.
Okay, I'll listen, but I, I think it's going down. I think you'd almost need to have a whole new branch, maybe do a, uh. Uh, we call zoning or something like that where you would have an office and create a whole new. Department to, to be dealing with this stuff, I mean, it's not, because when we have policies. There and then, or we've tried to help in the past and then if, if you don't have a whole department, it's like. You had mentioned that we're not. Uh, when we did suggest an alternative site, I mean, there was.
No, and I, I understand.
So it's like, why are we going to go down to be helping them develop it when they can just dismiss it if it's not? If it's not something, so if we can give them an answer, yes or no, and then, okay, then that ends our. End of it unless we're going to, like I say, you go down to the zoning rabbit hole and have. More interaction and, and actually consequences of, of this stuff. So that's where my, my thing is like, where's this going to end? So.
And so, so I understand, so Pat, I want to ask this. So we're, we're the wards of the right away, we take care of the right away. And zoning has nothing to do with the right away, correct? I mean, we can. Yeah, so if, if someone's not doing what they're supposed to in the right away, there are actions we can take. Yes, was it does not involve zoning to take care of that.
That's true, yes.
So hopefully, but I know that that.
But my, my thing is that I think you would. That would be more, um. For, for the region, so if they were applying for zoning to, to be zoned, they would have to comply with everything else. I mean, you would have something with teeth in it. If you, if you actually had zoning.
Yeah, well.
In, involved too, because I don't see that we can develop or we can suggest what they do, but they can still ignore it, so I, I. That's the reason.
I see what you're saying. Um, I just, I just wanted to convey to you in a meeting that I sent a list of questions because I want them to feel like. We're listening, we just didn't have action steps afterwards and. I, I know from a constituent that can be frustrating because it's like, hey, I have this plan, I've shared it with you, I want to do this, all the things, and we didn't.
I'll share, I'll share the example that, that we came upon to let you just look at it. I mean, it's just, yes, I will, it's just, just things for us to look at that, that may help. And if, if we, if you don't think that they will help, that's fine, it's just.
And maybe when you said that, I, I went out further, but I mean, that's.
Right, right, well, and we have, we have several things coming up, you know. Uh, that have came up three instances in a row, you know, and how are we going to handle these? And if there's a way we can come up with, uh, a policy or how we're going to do that. It all kind of feeds in itself so that we're not sitting here going, hell, here comes another thing, how are we going to handle it? And then we'll talk about some of that later on this afternoon. But that's, that's my point is trying to come up with something to where we have some type of an answer. For the individual when they come to us, so we're not saying, well, we don't know, and then we try to figure everything out. Well, then we think we have an answer. And it doesn't, it's not really, it just leaves more questions. So it's just something for us to review and, and try to look and maybe resolve some of these. Before they even get into where they're at now, this is the way I look at it. And I don't know, Casey and I have not talked about what we're talking about now, that's just my opinion on how. How I would like to see us try to do some things.
Well, and for me, of just this, like, there's an answer in. We haven't dealt with this before, we're going to have some workshops, put policies in place and develop some criteria. And then I can get back to you once that's done, like that's an answer, right of like, okay, they hear me. They're going to put together their plan and then they're going to communicate back to me so that they're not just sitting there like. With no further action, I guess, like, and whatever that looks like after our discussion. We've taken the time to discuss it and then communicate back, but. I don't know, I just, we have to have answers for constituents and we have to, um. Have plans because this is the first time we're experiencing it, but like everything else. You better deal with it on the first time because you're going to experience it several times in the future. And it's better to have the plans now to be consistent of how we'll handle, handle that, that's just my opinion.
But I'll send, send some of the information that Pat had, uh, found and then some that I've found to you guys. And it'll have, you know, a couple of different, uh, things. So then you can look at them, just have to look at and then, and I would like for us to, to have a, a, uh. Workshop at some point and maybe next week, if part of that's over, we can do some of, some of those things next weeks. All right, thank you.
Well, it's eleven fifteen, we had a executive session, non-elective personnel, um. County attorney, HR and finance and commissioners, twenty minutes. Yes. Well, I'm just saying.
I let Sherry know, but I, I haven't put back on.
She's.
I'm right here.
Oh, okay, you're coming. Yeah, we'll, um, we'll do this executive session and then, uh, we'll do the voting. For timeline purposes, I just want to stick with.
Okay.
Sorry, you're such a good volunteer, we appreciate you, Jack.
I was wondering why you still. Not remote, we're going to put that at the end, closing comments for.
Okay, this, commissioners, county attorney, finance.
I'm sorry, commissioners, HR, finance, county attorney, twenty minutes, non-elective personnel. I know why you came remote because of my cough, right, Sharon?
Right, no.
I'm zooming in, I don't want to be in there, I'll be moving it to a breakout room, so.
Okay, I'll move the, sort of. County commissioners recessed executive session at eleven seventeen. Uh, AM to discuss personal matters of non-elective personnel is allowed by KSA seventy five dash four three one nine B one. Now, the purpose of the closed session is to protect the privacy rights of the employee, the board come out of executive session and, you say twenty minutes?
Yep.
Twenty minutes in the commission room in the courthouse basement, most present will be the two commissioners. The county attorney, finance director and HR director.
Okay, I will second, I'm moving in second and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes two to zero. Okay, we are back in open session, um, and we are going to put the county clerk in here to finish the canvas. Before Catherine.
I have official results.
Thank you.
So we only have the fifteen ballots to go through, um, it is close to December, so we have people getting tear tags, so just add. Um, but everything in the provisional column is, is those results that came from those provisional ballots. Um, there was no upsets, um, no turnovers. And there are no ties, I checked that because when you're up, we'll have to check that. So. These would be the election official result, official election results.
Okay, so. So I would look for a motion to approve the official election results for the twenty twenty three general election. Uh, held on November seventh, twenty twenty three, presented by our county clerk, do you have a motion to approve?
Somewhere.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye, sorry.
Passes three to zero, and I'll go ahead and let you sign this copy, and then you guys can keep those, and we will get this on the website today. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Sharon.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle, thank you, we need to get some voters, need to get people on the ballot.
Thank you, thank you. All right, Captain's Arts Community Corrections Director.
So, we just have both of our advisory boards, so I just kind of wanted to give you guys an update, um, after the first quarter closed. So I do have these, the top three pages are just each, uh, month in the last quarter, plus October, what our expenses look like. Um, and then what's left in our accounts. So looking on the juvenile side in quarter one, which is. Uh, July to September, we spent a total of sixty nine thousand four hundred and thirty dollars and eighteen cents. Um, we current on the juvenile side, I'm sorry, and then we currently have two hundred and forty four thousand five hundred and eighty dollars and ninety eight cents. Left in our remaining grants. Um, our expected expenses are going to be around. One hundred and eighty seven thousand five hundred and ninety two dollars and ninety cents. Which should leave us with unexpended funds of about fifty six thousand nine hundred and eighty eight and eight cents. That is on our juvenile side. Also on the juvenile side, the state of Texas just released a new grant, or I'm sorry, the state of Kansas just released a new grant, old habit. Um, for juvenile behavioral health. They gave each judicial district fifty thousand, that was split down the middle for us, so Ashton received directly twenty five thousand and Leavenworth received twenty five thousand. Um, this can be used on any youth, um, a juvenile DCF youth that is in crisis or mental crisis or their family members. It can be helped, used to help with rent, utilities, um, evaluations, medication, things along those lines. It's a two-year grant, so we will not get another installment on this until FY twenty six. Um, but I have been able to work with court services to make them aware these funds are available. DCF is aware of these funds from my understanding, um. So we do have them available to us to use at this point in time. On the adult side for quarter one, we spent a total of fifty eight thousand four hundred and eighty two dollars. And twelve cents, and then our remaining grant fund is two hundred and two thousand nine hundred and fifty three dollars and ninety eight cents. We expect to spend an additional one hundred and sixty thousand six hundred and thirty seven dollars and eighty two cents. With the expected expen, unexpended funds of forty two thousand three hundred and sixteen dollars and sixteen cents. Um, so that's where we are on the budget and Mark, I did bring you one too.
So the un, um, spent money then.
If we do not spend that, then it would technically go back to the state of Kansas, but I do have a little bit further.
Okay.
Something that I wanted to propose. Uh, and granted, when I say expected, what I did was I took the amounts that were spent over the last two fiscal years, added. Five to ten percent on each of them to have an estimated amount so that I could have an idea of what potentially we would spend. There is wiggle room, obviously, um, we did see in October where we spent a little bit more here, but a little bit less here type of thing.
Okay.
Um, for FY twenty twenty three updates. In regards to closing out FY twenty three, on the juvenile side, we had completely closed out, the comp plan was completed and approved. And then our workbook, or I'm sorry, our workbook is still being worked on by FDOC right now. On the adult side, we completely closed out with our comp plan being completed and approved and our workbook being closed out. Um, so those finances are all reconciled and there's no other means that we have to make with those. Um, update on our programming, so for juvenile services, we currently are supervising eight clients. Um, in regards to the programs that we are offering, we have sixty five referrals, uh, we are expected the fifteen referrals, but. We have made it to sixty five with working with the school district. Now we are vetting those referrals because we have to make sure that. They meet the qualifications in regards to being a crossover youth, um, and also that we wouldn't be over programming, doing more harm than good. Type of thing, so we are working through those with the school district right now. Uh, we do currently have four programs that are running with twelve clients actively participating. Those, that is our five-week decision points courses, um, and then some of our crossroads, like our truancy group that is running right now on the juvenile side. And then last week, we did complete our first parent project and we had five successful completions out of eight, the other three. We're hoping to get back in and get them completed. Um, so there we are with our programming on the juvenile side for intake and assessment, the very last page of this, you will see the data that I'm pulling on this. Um, this is just for your guys' reference, I'm going to try and find data that I can pull. Um, to give a better outlook with programming and whatnot, I'm working on that right now. But in quarter one, we had a total of nineteen intakes and then in quarter two, so far we have eight intakes. So on this, you'll just see the type of intakes that we have, the ages that are coming through. Uh, frequency between male and female, how many are with DCF, um, and what kind of things are they coming to us for? When they're with DCF, so a high number of DCF, about thirty percent of the intakes we're doing for DCF are, um, due to runaway. And then also where we're making referrals to for hopefully interventions to avoid them coming back or getting further in the system.
Is the age right? The ages?
Is that what, correct?
So then, does this correlate with the offense type?
Yeah, so I'm sure you're probably like three week old, that, um, is, um, a non-criminal offense. That was a different type of intake.
Okay.
Mm-hmm, because we run the, the criminal offense, the police protective custody and then C.
Gotcha.
So we do all three of those.
Okay.
Um, so that's what I have on the intake side, on the adult services side. We are currently have twenty six active adults, so that means they're coming in our office, they're actively following probation, we're working with them. And then sixty four inactive, and inactive adult would be an absconded treatment, they're in jail, they're in prison. Um, interstate compact, we sometimes have offenders that commit a crime here, but live in Missouri, so we interstate compact them over in Missouri. Or courtesy supervision. Um, in quarter one, we had a sixty seven percent success rate, so our goal is at seventy five percent, so we're getting there. Right now, um, with six closures, four of those were successful and two were revocations due to new offenses. And then programming on the adult side, we just got it up and running, we have ten current referrals and eight of those are actively in programs with us right now. Um, so there's that, any questions about any of that?
No.
No, I feel like I'm just jabbering a lot to you guys right now.
You're very thorough.
Try. Um, so the next thing I wanted to talk about was a position, so in the past, we had an administrative assistant position at community corrections. Um, that position hasn't been filled for several years now. With the funding that we have and all that we are trying to do, it'd be very beneficial for us to have that position. Um, now that position wouldn't only do admin, it would also work on the intake side so that we can add some support on intake and assessment. With keeping up with the filing, follow-up calls, helping complete some of those areas, but then also doing admin, helping with orders. Um, keeping up with the filing of the budget and things along that nature. So we would like to look at adding that position, we do have the funding for it, um, we'd be running it on, uh, seventeen A through seventeen E on the state guidelines. Um, which is anywhere between. Sixteen six an hour to twenty one fifty two. Um, an hour based on experience, things along that nature. So the advisory board, I did take this position to them, both boards did vote and approved us getting that, but I also wanted to bring it to you guys before we were to do, go any further.
I mean, I would support your recommendation if you have the funding and you see a need for. Everything you're doing, I mean, everything you've done so far since taking the position is the number, great. Yeah, and the communication that you give us is. Awesome, so yeah, I would be supportive of that, okay?
Yeah, I would too.
All right, perfect, so then. The last thing I have is on our bond clients, I did get with Pat about this last week, um, I did go through over the. Since January, all our bond clients that have been assigned to us, they had to pay fifteen dollars a week to us and. since January, all our bond clients that have been assigned to us, they had to pay fifteen dollars a week to us, and currently we are owed eleven thousand, three hundred and seventy-two dollars in bond fees that have not been paid. And so I'm looking at ways that we can, I'm working with the officers, like court services or our officers, who their clients still owe us funding, but also looking at alternative routes, we can go to collect those funds. Well, that is all I have, unless you guys have any other questions for me?
No. How was your juvenile meeting?
So the juvenile meeting overall, I think, was good. I know Pat has something for you guys with that, but overall, it's good. There was no concerns about anything, I gave him the same information on the juvenile side as I gave you guys. But we also talked about the future of J-CAB. We did have a forum at this J-CAB, and everybody does see the need for us to remain how we are as we do here in Asheson with the first district working together. So with that being said, and I'll let Pat explain this a little bit more to you guys, we did decide that we wanted to have further communication with KDOC on this to try and get some clear, clear answers on things if they're able to give them to us. So this is, I believe, the letter that Pat had hyped up.
Yeah, I wasn't at that meeting, but they passed or made a motion that the Board of County Commissioners of Asheson County send a letter to the Department of Corrections, and so this is the result of that.
And is the Jeff, Patrick, and Marie McNeil are all part of the Kansas Department of Corrections?
Yes.
And our hopes of sending this letter will get us clarification of a path forward, one way or another, I mean.
Right, and answer the question about whether or not we have one board or two boards?
So how? How do, I mean, I guess they outline that for us against the will, if it turns out that they want us to stay together, like? Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Did the Leavenworth Board member show up to the last meeting?
Um, no, we did not have any county commissioners at the meeting from Leavenworth. We did not have the Community Corrections Director from Leavenworth there. We did have city-appointed officials there, but we did not, I mean. That was what we had.
Hey, well.
And I could change the signatures if you Commissioner Rebus and I talked about it in some detail, and we saw a draft of this before, because he was at that meeting, and I wasn't. So I could change the signatures where you want it.
Well, that's what I was wondering, does it give more for him as sitting on the board to come from him versus me, or does it matter, or does it better to come from you as our director, or, I mean?
Without putting all three of those commissioners on?
Yeah, or all three?
Well, I mean, that way, it shows, I mean, yeah, or I believe we're all on board, I know Alan and you that we're all in unison on it. That's my angle on that would be.
Yeah, I like that.
You know, when Commissioner Rebus will be there? No.
No. No.
We might be able to give this bigger electronic thing, sure. Does he need to actively vote to be able to sign?
I think the overall goal is just, again, trying to make sure that what we're doing is in the best interest of the clients that we serve and our communities that we're serving, and the goal overall is just what is the best way to move forward at this point in time, you know? From the people that were at our meeting on, I think it was two weeks ago, I can't remember the exact date, that's the question that's out there, what is the best way to move forward, because what we're seeing is we share so many services already, why would we all of a sudden separate this one? When it can impact?
Well, I also think that there needs to be a ruling on it to see if what's going on with them is legitimate. I mean, if it's not actively being recognized, I mean, there would be acting, I mean, it's in limbo now until there's been some kind of decision, I mean, by authorities, the powers that be, to whether their actions are legitimate or not. So the longer that goes, and then all of a sudden, then there would be really, there might be things that happen in the meantime that would be detrimental to maybe both of the programs, assuming that it's one way and it turns out that it's not, so I think that needs to be clarity on on what's going on, whether they recognize it one way or another, so then you can make decisions with the correct.
And as far as asking questions one and two, but on questions three and four, what is our, I guess, motivation to know that, because it doesn't involve us?
Well, it does, I think that it's gonna be, they can't both mutually exist, like they can't recognize the both boards in more question one and number three, I think it will just, they'll have to give an answer, because if you're gonna if they are recognizing the former board or the joint I wouldn't think that they could then also recognize the single board in question three.
Yeah, I guess I was just wondering, like, we're involved in questions one and two, but we're not in three and four, so I was just curious, like.
I was thinking on more of a legal point, they could tell, given their justification for why they would recognize them when, to me, it seems like if they need to be overseen by the administrative judge, and they haven't been, I mean, to me, that's more than legitimacy comes, yeah.
Well, and I think that is where the question is, and I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but from my understanding, how it is written is, it is up to the counties with the advisement of the judicial judge, and that part has not taken place, and then on top of that, I know action hasn't exactly supported this motion, and we attempted to get together, we've put a lot of attempts out there, whether it's through a J-CAB or commission meeting or something along that nature, and it's not going anywhere, so we're kind of at a rock and a hard spot. And I think that's what the hope of this letter is, is let's get out of this rock and a hard spot. If it is that we're gonna be separate, we're gonna be separate. If it is that we're gonna work together, then let's work together, but let's just do it in the best interest of the clients and get out of limbo at this point. I don't know, Pat, if you would say it any different than I, how I did.
No, and I also understand you could take paragraphs, questions three and four now. I'm interested to know the answers to them though. But they could be taken. I could probably listen, but I mean, I.
So I always just put myself in the other person's shoes, and it's like if the answer to one and two are in fact, like, we're working together in the future, like, I just you never wanna poke a bear or, you know, do anything in a way that could be like what does that have to do with you? Like, yeah, I don't know. But.
It would be hard to answer the first two questions without actually answering this second two.
That's a leaky back, I mean, I was just. I know from sitting in the J-CAB, the initial request is, is who who is, who has the authority at this point in time, so do we acknowledge the fact that there's the First Judicial District Board still, or are we acknowledging that there's two different ones? And I think that's the root of what the J-CAB would like to know.
Well, and maybe that's, does the KDOC recognize the existence and authority of Leavenworth County Juvenile Corrections Advisory Board and support the formation of an Asheson County, you know?
Yeah.
To where, then it relates to us, then it's, I know that's another, but I don't know, I just.
Yeah.
And so then, if so, would the Asheson County have to come up with a new comprehensive plan?
Here's our comprehensive plan separate.
Our comprehensive plan is separate, and it has to be, has to be submitted for us to get the grants that we've received, so right now, it's been submitted and approved.
Okay. So it's separate from theirs anyway?
This year, yes, I can't tell you about previous years, but this year, we applied for our stuff separately from there, so yes.
Let's make it right, so.
I know, sorry to be a pain, but.
No, 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 we want to make it right.
So question three, like, it kind of is important, as long as we've been tied to Asheson County, like, and supports the formation of one for us, I mean, because you're strictly going on what was always, yeah, that first judicial, and so if the answers of one and two are no longer, does KDOC recognize his existence and authority of Leavenworth County and then support us moving forward with our county?
Yeah.
I do like that better. I see the value of three and four.
If, but we just need to make them pertain to us, so that it's not like, yeah, this doesn't pertain to us, why are we asking, kind of?
Yeah. No, I don't disagree. And I think that is, you know, our concern obviously is Asheson and our families and use that we we service, so yes, I don't disagree with you.
So the phrasing of that, does the KDOC recognize the existence and authority of Leavenworth County Juvenile Corrections Advisory Board and to support the creation of a separate Asheson County Juvenile Correction Advisory Board?
Yeah, and if, yeah, and if so, support the and then that will tell you what direction you need to go to, yeah, create your board.
Probably have the commission names out of order, could they have chair chairwoman, second district, first district, but.
Thanks. Okay, so yeah, that's I think that sounds good, Pat, thank you. Thanks, Katie. No problems, let me know if you guys have any questions. Do you want to sign yours?
Or do we need to? I only printed one on the second page, which we have sent.
Okay.
You want, do you want me to print the separate?
No, we'll just sign this one and put it in the blue folder, and then Alan, when he gets back in. All right, I look for a motion to sign and send a letter to the First Judicial District Juvenile Corrections Advisory Board as presented from our county counselor to obtain clarification on the First Judicial District Juvenile Corrections Advisory Board.
You make a motion? The, the motion would be to send a letter to Megan Milner, the Deputy Secretary.
Okay.
Like you said, to send a message, send a letter to the advisory.
Okay, so I make a motion to send the letter to Megan Milner, Deputy Secretary of Juvenile and Adult Community Based Services to clarify First Judicial District Juvenile Corrections Advisory Board.
Did you make the motion?
I'm looking. Yeah.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, and I will second, it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes to the zero.
Thank you.
Thanks, Katie. Thank you, session, attorney client, Roden Bridge, commissioners, and Pat.
They were.
And, and finance director. Twenty-five minutes. All right, fine. Yeah.
I'll move that the Board of County Commissioners recessed to executive session at twelve oh eight PM for consultation with an attorney in the public body, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship as allowed by KSA seventy-five dash four-three-one-nine V two, and that the purpose of the closed session is to check the confidentiality of the discussion. Now, the board come out of executive session in twenty-five minutes in the commission room in the courthouse basement, and those present will be two commissioners, Pat Henderson, Finance Director, and Roden Bridge Superintendent. I said finance director. Oh, you did, I'm sorry.
Okay, I will second, so it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes to the zero.
Fifteen.
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 Fifteen minutes, okay. I'll make a motion that we extend our previous executive session fifteen more minutes, same parameters and same individuals.
Okay, I will second, it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye. So, let's I don't know, present that we you're trying to find it. Let's see, microseal on top of that hard giant, on top of granite walls, I think. I don't think.
Yeah.
Oh, here you.
Unfinished business.
Thank you. Do you, do you want to stick around if we have an executive session, you want to be included in? Okay, all right. Oh, well, we can he's gotta be back there at one, so we could do ten minutes of an executive session.
Yeah, and I'm on county counselor update, so.
I would suggest a executive session, attorney client.
A uh executive session, attorney client for fifteen minutes.
Fifteen.
And Commissioner Rebus is available by telephone.
Okay. You want finance and senior village administration?
Hey, I'll move that the board of county commissioners recess into executive session at twelve forty nine. P M for consultation with an attorney for the public body, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney client relationship is allowed by K S A. Seventy five dash four three one nine B two and the purpose of the closed session is to protect the confidentiality of the discussion. And the board come out of executive session in fifteen minutes in the commission room in the courthouse basement. Those present will be. Uh two commissioners in person, one via telephone, Pat Henderson. Um a senior village administrator and finance.
And H R.
And H R.
Hey, I will second. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes two to zero.
Alan, Alan, we're no longer in executive session.
Do you want to extend? Want to extend?
He's gonna, he's gotta go. Okay, thank you.
Do we need, you and I need to extend?
Yeah, we should. Should we extend and just walk out of the timeline would be great.
How much longer?
Um fifteen.
They'll make a motion that we extend our previous executive session for fifteen minutes.
Hey, I will second that. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes two to zero. You have time, you guys. Wanna extend?
Well, should we see if he's?
Yeah. Will you? Either. Did you? I like your note. Did you like that?
I did. I thought it was a good one.
Yeah, do you want to read that?
Sure.
What is it?
The Power of One, um Joel Osborne, the Benedictan football coach posted about it and so I ordered it.
I've heard that title.
Read it. I thought it was good. One of those books like you read and you're like relating to.
I kept going back, so I'd read it and then I'd put it down and have work to do or whatever and then a week would go by.
Yep.
So it. Lit differently with what I was going through week by week too. I like, I think you'll enjoy it. I had it for a couple months. I was reading it consistently, like I would put it down and then forget about it and put it. I don't have a lot of time during the day. You just create some hours. I would read all day, every day if I could. Not those kind of books.
Oh, you know, I almost forgot. We need to talk about that C E O agreement too. That that Gina Kaufman sent me.
Yes.
Really know a whole lot.
So I. For some reason, I remember that, like I feel like.
Well, I tried to find some stuff in the minutes about it and I couldn't find anything in there. Cause they um indicated a a date. That we had seen it.
It's that email that she sent to us commissioners um. On behalf of the Heartland Works. Chair of Chief Elected Officials Board and Local Workforce Development Board. She emailed you and me and Eric and, or sorry, you and me and Alan and. Then she sent it again because we didn't respond or no, she forwarded the one from July. No, uh Monday, November sixth.
Say sixth.
Yeah. I just need to check with. I guess if we have to do it or not. And it said workforce, I put you on because I was like, maybe it was something you knew about that I'm like.
No, and I got a hold of um Mark and nothing. Stood out to me as far as regulation wise of what we need to do, everything.
Did you R S V P for the annual extension meeting?
No.
Are you going?
I hadn't found one.
The the link won't let me R S V P, so I was just curious. I went to Ray's thing and I was talking to some of the. Girls that planned it and they were mentioning R S V Ps and I was like, oh, yeah, forgot that one. Like, I think a lot of people have been R S V P. They just, which was mine, but. Something I tried to remember on this one.
I I could reach in.
Okay. Uh so maybe. How long once, you, ten minutes? Okay.
I'll move that we extend the previous. Executive session by another ten minutes.
I'll second. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. I passes two to zero.
Dramatic pause.
I know, I was like, oh, wait, that's me. Wait, good.
I'm good.
Okay. Um, you guys? Thank you. Pat, did you have a chance to see that um required renewal chief elected officials Ashes in County? Document that she sent.
Um. Yeah, and I think we had that um. We we have been in it before and I think they had a resolution, proposed resolution they sent us a couple months ago. And I. Didn't have any opinion about it one way or the other, but it didn't look like the resolution that they sent us had any. Obligation for us to do anything other than to say we approve of the work they're doing.
I believe the wording on this one was we signed the redlined uh template. But we need to now sign the uh final agreement. I just reread that email. So. I don't remember signing the original or the.
Can't find it myself, so.
Um so she asked if we could sign it and return it to her by Thursday, November ninth. And I told her no, because we weren't meeting um until today, but. Do you feel? Well enough from reviewing it that it's? Fine for us to sign it?
Yes.
Okay. So we'll just both sign it. Are you ready with that?
I'm okay with it.
So I vote for a motion um to approve the chief elected officials agreement. Dated October twenty twenty three. It's the United States Department of Labor requirement that counties participate in this. And are part of the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act. Do I have a motion um to approve?
So move.
Okay, I will second it. All those in favor say aye.
Alright.
Aye, and I will print it and we can sign it. Um, okay, and we do a non-elected personnel uh for fifteen minutes. With us, Jody and Mark, please.
How long?
Uh fifteen minutes should be fine.
I'll move the board of county commissioners recess into executive session at. One thirty seven. P M to discuss personal matters of non-elected personnel is allowed by K S A seventy five dash four three one. Four three one nine B one. And that the purpose of the closed session is to protect the privacy rights of employee. And that the board come out of executive session in fifteen minutes in the commission room. Uh basement of the courthouse and those present will be uh two commissioners, uh H R and finance director.
Hey, I will second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes two to zero. Okay. Okay, let me see. Um, non-elected please. Um fifteen minutes. H R. And.
All this.
Yeah.
We'll move the board of county commissioners recess into executive session at. One forty, one fifty four. P M to discuss personal matters of non-elected personnel is allowed by K S A seventy five dash four three one nine B. One, that the purpose of the closed session is to protect the privacy rights of the employee and the board come out of the executive session in ten minutes.
That's fine.
Uh in the.
Fifteen, fifteen.
Fifteen minutes. At the commission room courthouse and those present will be uh two commissioners, uh Pat Henderson and H R.
I'll second. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, sorry, you already have it written down. Okay, um do we have any other county counselor updates? Pat, you need anything else?
No.
Okay, um no more executive sessions. Do I have a motion to approve um the past two weeks of expenses?
Also move.
Okay, and I will second. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes two to zero. Um I would also look for a motion. Um to not have a meeting on Tuesday, November twenty eighth of twenty twenty three, have a motion to approve.
Also move.
Okay, and I will second. It's been moved and seconded. All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes two to zero. Um any public comment?
And a countywide email be sent out that to the all department heads that we're not gonna have a meeting that day. Cause I know I unless they're really looking at our agenda, they assume. That we have, so if some.
I don't even, what date?
November twenty eighth.
Twenty eighth, just no meeting that week.
Oh, have her have Michelle send your.
Okay.
Um, okay, so any no public comment? I look for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
And I will second. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.